We'll talk about a town meeting warrant article, basically that's just gonna be FEMA thing.
Just the FEMA bylaw, so the Attorney General's Office approved the bylaw, but made a couple of notes of some things that were not consistent with state law. And so their recommendation is because we will not be able to enforce those things. They recommend that we go back to town meeting to fix just those provisions. And those were, they're reflected in the draft that had KP review it. I drafted it, just wanted, you know, us all to talk about it and then potentially, you know, vote to submit it for inclusion in the warrant if you agree with it. One thing is because we can't require special permits for ABUs. In particular, we couldn't single out accessory dwelling units in the bylaw as meeting special. So the language change that KP suggested would make sure that accessory dwelling units are treated like any other structure, that they're not specially singled out just by which accessory in the floodplain. That was one thing. And the other thing was actually fixing language that has been in our bylaw for decades.
Yeah.
Yeah. And actually, I never noticed it and they didn't notice it when it first was passed. But the wording in one of the paragraphs makes it sound like the entire town is in the floodplain overlay district. And it's, it's not just the way it was worded. So John Edman had suggested we change that language to reflect that it's super voted on in underlying zoning district and not, not a zoning district, but it consists of the entire town. So those are the two points of clarification.
For the record, we already kind of approved this at town meeting. But then when we sent it off to the Attorney General, if I had some issues with it, so we'll fix it and then bring it back to town meeting.
Right. Just these two points.
I tell anybody, it's not a new law. This isn't another, this isn't another law. This is, which is fixing the one that we already voted for, but needed some adjustments when we went through the Attorney General's. So it's clear what's going on.
Because if we don't do it, that's fine, but we won't be able to enforce those provisions. So it does create confusion to have a bylaw that we can't. My recommendation to you is that we redo it, keep it over at this town meeting. But, you know, that's how I see it. If you'd like to, you know, discuss, vote to, you know, submit it or not. The warrant does close for submittals from the boards of the news on August 18th, which our next meeting is on August 19th. So if we do want to submit it, this would be.
You have a question?
Yeah. As you know, there's some conflicts in the industrial zone where you require a special permit, but it also states that it's an accepted use. Is that could be clarified?
No, this pertains only to the floodplain bylaw, not to any other uses in other districts. This is just provisions in our new floodplain bylaw, which was passed at the last, sorry, the January, the whole town meeting to become current with FEMA regulations. So the provisions in here don't address any of the other conflicts or oddities that are in the rest of our zoning bylaw. But the building inspector and I are keeping lists of some of these issues and.
Have they submitted for rewrite of the bylaws since they haven't been updated since 2017?
No, I mean, they've been amended almost year since then, but no, we haven't recodified them since then.
Yeah. And it's really, it's necessary for us to make sure we get this on crack and get it approved. Because that's where we get the ability for people that are in the floodplain to get flood insurance. So we have to be, we have to be applying for the current FEMA law in order for them to have access to flood insurance. So it's important that we can do it for the people that are in that particular situation. So.
Warren, what was the deadline for that?
Oh, so the new maps went into effect on July 8th. So we had to have passed our bylaw by July 8th, which we did.
We did, yeah. We just have to fix a couple of things.
Okay. So when we go back to town meeting, it's just as amended?
Yeah.
It's okay.
Couple of fixes.
It's just those two sections.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? What's that?
Seems pretty straight.
Okay, guys, it's, it's, so that's the only, you want us to vote for, vote to include in town meetings?
No, we don't. We just take a vote on this, but I think it's best probably to take a vote to submit it to the warrant, you know.
Put it on. So basically what we're gonna do is we'll put it online.
Motion.
Motion, yeah, there's motion and motion there.
The, I move the CBC vote to submit the drafted warrant article addressing changes to the floodplain zoning bylaw for inclusion in the October 2025 town meeting warrant.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Very now, okay, you say aye? Aye? I can show three favoritism opposed, as it's not quite arrived yet. All right. Do you want to check on? Okay, I noticed we have some GPAs in there, but we don't really have the official paperwork on them in there. Send a list of what was coming up.
It's a long document.
Oh, yeah, it's a, when you open it, it's all, they're all together.
Yeah, it's a thirty page document.
So I honestly may have some trouble loading if it's such a long document. I'm sorry, we just got these yesterday. So if you haven't had time to look at them, understandable. Oh, and every other page is blank. I can kind of talk through them if you want. You want to go through them now?
Well, you might as well take a look at a couple of these, so. So the status of 122 Park Street, special use permit for music school, if Thomas will rule. Is, do you have additional information on that?
There's a narrative here, the, the represses special permit to allow mixed use in the local business district. And actually, I think even any commercial uses in that district require a special permit. So, so the narrative says that they reside at 122 Park Street. They were hoping to use some of the space to start a music school. It's not a home occupation. Certainly is more intensive use than that, that it is in a business district. But it's still be small, every one group lesson room on the first floor and four to five small lesson rooms on the second. There'll be no more than five lessons being taught at one time. It would be clean with five to seven parking spots to the immediate left on the driveway. Music. It's, it's no construction proposed other than the paving. I think if this is a changing use, we could ask that they come for a site plan review. But right now, they're just in front of the CBA looking for a special permit to be able to have the residential, which is there already and the, and the business use that they're proposing. It's also potentially, you know, educational use. So the, the ZBA may just decide that it doesn't need a permit at all, but it's.
But it doesn't need one because it's educated, that's right. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Kind of right on the edge. Okay, so basically.
It's a busy spot over there too.
Yeah.
And it looks like a shared driveway with a 128 Park Street as well. Is that that?
They seem to add five parking spots on. So they're going to, they said all be paid five to seven parking spots to the immediate left on entry in the driveway. So, so they can back out and drive out and straight out. No, I think it's pretty, pretty clear what they want to do there. Does anybody have any questions or any comments on that?
So they just, they want to just put like a music studio in there?
Teach kids music. I don't think it's gonna be anything wrong. Teaching kids music, the more, the better. In my opinion.
Yeah, no. It's only matter of time before it starts coming out of the school budget, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
As horrible as that said us.
Okay, so, so do we want to recommend?
No, yeah, the concept is good. I just worry about traffic. So if, if their intent is just, you know, it's just one person and they're just teaching one person at a time. Or is it, hey, the left side of my house is now a studio and I'm gonna break out into four, five smaller teaching rooms. And then you have four or five, you know what I mean? I just.
You certainly make the comment that we, we would look to see them perhaps provide some limit to, to the traffic issue. Some limit on enough of the people there.
Yeah, I tried to pull out a driveway right next to his, Jamie's house.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just a mess.
Well, I mean, so we certainly tell them past on two weekends, of course, not per people. It certainly suggests that they look at the quantity of people there at any given point.
Yeah, I think that's important because we don't really, or is it just one teacher? I mean, if you look at the way the house is set up, all beautiful.
If they, if they, if you read between the lines, if they put in five to seven parking spots, they're not going to be doing one person at a time.
Kind of standard.
So, so I would say that, so you want to add a comment, everyone, to consider the, the traffic?
Yeah, I think so, sure. And if they've spoken to the neighbor at 128, especially where it's a share, it's a shared entrance off park.
That's something that, that both appeals would allow us, you know.
Yeah.
We should pick a recommendation based on the concept.
Got you.
Yes, you, John, you have a comment?
As most of us know, the left side of that house has always been a business.
Yeah. Well, this is actually important on education, so it kind of gets a pass. The, the, the warrant appeals may give it a pass. So I mean, they would certainly, they certainly wouldn't be surprised if they did, so.
Pretty, pretty much from Irie's gas station.
Yeah.
On, on the way down to the high school, it's all business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. You know, this is usually a public comment, but I'd like to hear some, someone's got something. No, go ahead.
I, it sounds like a great idea. She did mention for individual lesson rooms to handle group. So it sounds like they would have up to five lessons going at the same time. So and if one, one would be a group, so you're talking five, six, seven rooms.
Well, modifying the driveway so that, and again, what appeals is gonna look at this. Modifying the driveway so people can back out, go straight out into the road as opposed to trying to back out of there. I'm sure is a big plus as far as traffic goes, which you can see was coming, so. It sounds like they've considered that and which is a, which is a good thing, so. Okay, you want to make any more comments, guys? Bill Ford Main Street, specialties permit for a firearms retail store. We, we, there we have firearms retail store in town, so I'm just place over there, so. So at first I read it, I'm like, ooh, that would, I tend to imagine, oh, very good. Oh, you must have, yeah, in town.
I think there's a, a specific use for, you know, firearms dealer in the zoning. I think the previous building inspector always considered that just retail. But the zoning doesn't give any detail about that at all, which is why I think it's under that. I think that's the reason.
Well, I, I would, I would imagine that the other stores, well, the other stores, basically, I understand is that we just, as a retail store, they sell firearms, they sell ammunition, things like that, so. If, I'm sure that they have researched this to some extent, knowing there's already an existing one on 28th, so. So this would be if they just be, this is just decided, considered a retail store, you know, then.
But specifying training center and, and whatnot that they're looking for. That's always in training. Is that gonna fall into their education too? Does that fall into their education too then?
It does.
I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know.
Hey, Dave.
People do have to be trained about it to get the.
Right.
Bonus, yeah. Get a permit.
Yeah, that's great, great.
So there's a certain amount there. I don't know. I think they're looking at it more though from a commercial situation. So we want to make any comments on this one or? Talking about we are firearms. Have you read through this yet or?
Yeah. I mean.
Like I said, it's already, we already have one story.
Yeah.
It's a new thing.
Yeah, I didn't really, I didn't.
And nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we're, no comments, you know. The usual precautions.
Do you want me to say does not object as long as, or do you want it just enough?
Well, you know, I mean, I, I think, I think it probably falls under, under the same thing that the other one does, that it's just a commercial endeavor, you know, a retail store, retail store, in the sense it's not prohibited. You know, since we obviously have one, I think it probably would. Would fall under the same, same jurisdictions. So, 14 hour Conquest Street, specialties permit for auto customization shop, customization shop.
Final, perhaps we can go tempting. Well, so this is the new development right there on Concord, right? They, they have the condo kind of building, I think in the back is that what this is?
Yeah, I think it's the rear.
Right, rear. So that's an allowed, I mean, that was part of our review, our site plan review and everything.
It was part of our site plan review as far as the use looks like. It must be a special permit use, otherwise we're not.
Because, you know, they receive customers, that kind of thing, auto. I think we have the same kind of issue way up on Concord, closer to, you know, Wilmington.
Probably short, but they were at the same campus, but. I would have assumed that that was a, an allowed use there, but I guess it is a special permit.
The guy raising the pen here. Those are that corner that used to be the farm.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we generate, this is a public hearing. But if you have a comment that, that is going to help us with our decisions, I will take it.
So I'm the real estate agent on that property. And the property was just finished, all is, it's a brand new building. Need a brand new building. Every bay has a P3 in it. So, which is created, what we can boil and run.
Right, goes to a.
Run, run on separation.
Yeah, goes to a separator, yeah.
There's, these guys are painting, nothing, they're doing laps. It's not a auto body repair, it's not a, you know, it's change out. Old cars and let restore every place, so it's their environment. It's a detailing situation with it, they, they're wrapped vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
So. It's a very clean business. They have an existing business, something I wanted to know about, which is very clean. Hold and take pictures and show them.
Yeah, but we saw that the board of appeals makes this decision. We just recommend the rest of the building based on use in the, in the, in the location. So if we think that it's an harmful use in that location, we would recommend against it. Or without it to be, we, you know, kind of zoning, you know, that would be the decision that we make and pass on to the board of appeals just as a recommendation, so.
And it's not part of the zoning issue. This is, falls under that thing that it's allowed under industrial. But it also, because it has vehicle in the title, creates special permit. So that's a conflicting.
Yeah.
Yeah, statement.
So any comments on this one?
I've been back there. It's a, it's just as you say, it's a new building. War Bay is pretty new, very out of the way. I mean, I mean, the, the only, the only comment I would make, again, and it's not really ours, but would just be, when originally when the development went in, there was a lot of neighbors, people that were concerned about the traffic, you know, the, coming in and out. So any kind of like high volume type thing, I'd be more concerned about. But I totally understand the type of business, it's not high volume. They can do two or three a day kind of thing, or four, you know, that kind of thing. It's not anything that's gonna add a lot of tricks to. But if there was something, I probably would just raise my hand and say, that's, that kind of concerns me. But a detailer kind of hinting business does not concern me.
How many bays?
It's four in the building.
Five is.
Was it five?
I'm gonna use five.
Oh, it is, technically there's four, there's three singles and one double.
Okay.
So, but there.
Another base.
Space for five. Base for five, yes. If they put up a wall, they could have.
Yeah. That kind of, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments on this? Yeah, okay, this has a business and saving. Okay, any comments on? Okay, I guess I can say we, we don't have any comments on it, you know. We don't have, we have no objection. Yeah, no.
Yes, right.
Yes, you have that note here, that is all for the agenda for the, the agenda that's from the, for the appeals. So I was going through the items in that agenda, so. So, so. Okay, we did a, we did the notification of the board of selecting.
Okay.
You know, we did the town meeting warrant, essentially it's just a, you know, just, yes, just a redo of FEMA that was a good direction.
Yeah, right.
And now we've taken care of the ZBAs as well.
Transcript too.
Okay. We've got a few minutes here, maybe seven thirty, then Mary two, and we could. Open the 35 Main Street Special Permit Request Public Hearing. Merely, indeed, a win notice.
Yes, do you want me to read the? If you like to.
What is it?
Uh, just the public hearing notice is in the, it's in the file or I thought over. But it should be read out loud.
I got it. It's the planner memo or? Oh, applications, legal, legal notice.
Notice, yeah.
That public hearing notice is just read aloud?
Yeah.
Uh, notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, in room 14 of the North Reading Town Hall and online at 7:30 PM on the application of, I'm gonna mispronounce it, I apologize, Fan Win for a site plan review for the property located at 35 Main Street, North Reading, Mass, map 23 parcel 38.
Okay.
Keep going.
He wants us to read the online zoom info, but maybe just a copy of the.
A copy of this plan is on file in the Community Planning Commission office Monday through Thursday, 8 AM to 4 PM, and Friday, 8 AM to 1 PM. Uh, there's also a website where copy of the plan can be viewed at with a link.
We have a presentation.
Yes. Did you have to? I gave you other team?
Um, yes, oh, you mean to actually be, yes, Richard, no, I can't, do you want me to?
If you don't mind.
Yes.
How far off was it with the name?
It's good.
Okay.
That's, that's why I, I could.
In my email, but I.
I can speak to it. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us. My name is Tom Nguyen and alongside me is my partner, Kong Lin, and we're with Brett Stewart. Uh, we're from Flo Goff Lounge, located currently in Sawis Mass. Uh, we are a ten bay indoor and gossel similar with a kitchen and bar. Um, our proposal tonight is to expand our second location to 35 Main Street. A little bit about our business is that we have ten indoor and gossel simulators. We use a technology, technology called Golf Sun. Um, it's state of the art right now is the best on the market in terms of indoor golf. Um, a lot of what we do is community outreach. We have local high schools that comes in practice. We fundraise and we support local teams. Um, our core business is golf. We golf every day as we can, as much as we try. Um, we like North Reading to be our second location just because of the proximity and also the good things that we've heard through Mrs. Stewart. Um, right now, our plan with 35 Main Street is to, there's two layouts that we want to do. When the first layout is six in base with a kitchen and bar, or the second layout would be eight in base with the intentions of BYOB and parting up with local restaurants to have the option to dine in or to do delivery. Um, a little bit more about the golf sim system that would bring it in. It's something my partner can elaborate with a little bit more.
Yeah, like so he said, it's state of the art. Um, for reference, it's, most simulators out there are about twenty to forty thousand dollars. Ours, for one, one unit is about eighty thousand. Um, the difference between ours and others are that we have high speed cameras. Um, it has all the bells and whistles with the moving platform, auto ball retrieval, auto ball Tia. It has, um, it has moving, moving platform, AI analyzers, AI coaching. It has everything that you need and it's, it's a fun experience. That's arcade.
Yep, the, the town saw this where we're currently at. They, it's been a great head. We, we've met with so many people that just love it. So I think this concept is a great asset to the community. Um, but in regards to zoning, we did get additional three parking spots from the landlord so that we can meet the requirements for occupancy. But that's, um, that's what we are trying to do. Hopefully it gets to the use in North Reading as well.
So, how many are you, you want to use three of the units that are up front?
That's correct.
Okay, and those were initially designed for retail sale, retail uses is what we had in mind. However, this not comes or fruition quite. Uh, is what we had in mind. However, this not comes to fruition quite the way we had hoped. Um, so I think they're probably empty right now, right? Those units.
Yes.
And that, that building's been there for a few years now, so.
Yep. They come back to us every year or two, ask.
They can, they can store it.
They will store it.
I think this, this is a better plan than story. Um, but there probably, there are a few things that, that, uh, will need to be considered. I mean, have you spoke to the, like, select board about having a liquor license?
Yes, we, this was the first stop where we went to plan it first to be sure we get their approval. Um, depending on this being what I'll follow the important thoughts too.
Cool. Also, um, depending upon how you do the food thing, you would need, you know, um, the grease trap and all that stuff, you know, you'll definitely have a you have a bar, you definitely have an impact on the setting system. And you have to find out what the design was for that, whether we handle the flows that your, your business is likely to generate. Because those three offices normally would have maybe two people and maybe six people altogether during the day, and that what you're talking about is a possibility of client turnover. You could have quite a few people. And so, um, there's gotta be, there'll be a calculation. So you're really gonna need to talk to the board of health to make sure that, uh, that the system as it exists there is capable of handling the use that you wanna give to us. I, I think that's a that, I think that actually is a, is a big red stop sign to make sure you can do that. Because if you tend probably it, because if it doesn't meet the criteria, then it's gonna take away your, your bar and food thing, which I know usually those are all profit line items, so. So you're gonna wanna make sure you can do that before you get too far down the road. Um, concept, I think, sounds pretty good to me. I mean, it's, it's at least a reasonable use for the space, which right now is doing nothing, so. So, um, and it, and, and it is, you know, golf is definitely, uh, a hot item, so, um, so I, I think you're probably gonna be doing a good thing. Just have to see how it all works out. So, any board have any comments or questions?
Um, what are your handicaps?
Yeah. How much? How many? I'll say eighteen to be.
No, wow. That was just for fun, but, uh, just curious with the hours, like, what do you think for days and hours?
So our current location, it's from seven A M. It's a ten, and, um.
Seven days.
Seven A M.
So we have, um, you know, the, the morning golfers that come and practice, you know, in the winter, they're, they're waiting outside our doors at six forty-five and they come in and practice and then, then like, well, it's still golfers, but people that get out of work, they might get around it. So that's why we open a little later.
More social. In the later hours, probably.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, uh, to be honest with you, a very positive thing, golf, golf is, golf is golf, so when they come and be.
Which model is the, uh, sogus? Is it, do you have a, a kitchen and liquor license there?
Yeah, we have a full, full liquor license in the kitchen.
Okay.
We have sewer there, though.
We have sewer. Uh, that's why I, I propose a eight bay layout with the B Y O B and the, the delivery of food to kind of take back from the, the service part. Um, like I said, our main objective is golf, so. But it kind of goes hand in hand.
I like the second, the second kind of spreads wealth around town a little bit as far as other restaurants and.
If you can't do the food, then you'd have, you know, the other places, that, that's great, I'm on speed, um, like, is the menu.
But.
Well, you target with, like, DoorDash, Grubhub, that kind of thing, or when you work directly with a restaurant?
I, I, I think the wrestling since it's a community-based, um, we're gonna take the minimum amount and go to the long pub shop and.
Okay. I think, I think you mean getting answered, but if it's the takeout on their model, it's really the only result is trash, you know, but it's not like, it's not like washing.
Of the B Y O B, because, uh, does that, you know, does that mean you're gonna do setups? They just for them.
Well, what's the run? From my experience with the legalizing, it's still technically a legalizing, so the manager on staff has to be certified um, to serve. We're not serving, but you still have to check that easy, but anyone could bring it in. So we still won't manage that, but it would just take the aspect of us actually having it on site. It's just an option for the people.
Kind of someplace to have, like, opening fees and stuff where, I don't know if that's something you had or you know, thought about?
No, we actually, it's like fourteen.
Yeah, that sort of thing.
We haven't, we haven't really thought about that concept, but I think, like, going back to the community, we are purely golf, so it's more of an option, like, when you go golfing, you have a beer and a hot dog or something, but.
Yeah. Do you know if there, aside from your other facility, you know, if there's other in the region similar as far as?
We are the biggest one right now for the golf sun technology in the women. So this, this system, if you guys golf, you should come by and we'll take care of it, but, um, I'm on a check of the system is, is honestly the best system on the market right now. The the company itself is basically itself career and each year they host a five million dollar tournament that anyone can qualify for. And allocation qualifies to be part of that tour, but you are playing with, you know?
I was just curious in terms of making it a little bit more, bringing other town people into our town, creating a little bit more flow uh, into North Reading for revenue and that sort of thing.
I, I, I think, uh, they will bring a lot of people from far away, because we do have people come from Maine that come from, um, Vermont, they come from Connecticut, wherever, and then just for the technology, it's just like.
The Thompson Club put one of those, and I don't know if they've got it done yet or not.
I mean, they actually stopped by our location too.
Yeah, yeah.
Which club?
Thompson Club, they, 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 uh, uh, added some room, uh, on, and they are putting one in simulator in, but it doesn't, it doesn't sound.
It was two, two simulators or just one?
In two ways.
Two, but they have built the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably that low end.
Are you distributors of that technology? Are you kind of a local? Do they have that kind of setup and you're distributors of it as well?
The biggest one right now is in New York and that's straight from the manufacturer.
That's where you got your. Okay, yeah, but that's where you go, or you, you're just direct?
Yeah, we are, we're direct from the, from.
Yeah, we go out this month, I'll send to it.
Okay.
Hey, well, you have a few things to work on, I think.
Yeah.
Here, I, um. We have, uh.
Something, yeah, it's really the pathetic amount and probably really the biggest, that was all originally, you know?
Yeah, it's designed for office space, those three offices, well, just three offices with, you know, twenty-five gallons a day, as I, you know.
I think they should put a soil pipe on it.
Yeah.
Wow. I like the idea, though, we, as Warren said, when we talked about it, we've, we've had the owner come to us a number of times to see if they could go all storage, get rid of the mixed-use element. And we've been hesitant, it's been since I, you know, I'm, I'm starting my third term, but at least twice. And we've been hesitant to say yes, because we really want to make Main Street a bit more vibrant than just having it storage. Uh, so I think that was a smart thing to do, you know, and I'm, I'm kind of pleased to see this applicant, because it is, it sounds like this, that's a good energy type of place.
It's a cool, unique idea.
Oh, I love it, you know, like, I like the idea, and I'm, I'm just a crappy golfer. I work too much, so I'm like, I golf like three times a year, so.
I only do that for benefit. There were three other guys that actually know how to play.
Well, but I think it's great, but as Warren said, Cher said, I think there's definitely, you know, select board on the liquor stuff and more help on. But you've got some great workaround ideas that I think you should definitely have put together, well-thought-out, like, wait, but I wouldn't settle for them. I mean, I'd go for what you wanna do, your core kind of business, but, you know, their vodka plans.
There could be some additional costs. I mean, if the system is, is adequate, you still may have to put a grease trap in, so.
Right, right.
Well, you should have a discussion with the board of health on, on that whole, on, on your concept and see how far he, you know, you, you'll let it go. And that would kind of be where you start from to build the rest of your project.
Okay. We'll do.
Yeah, I think that's where, yeah, gonna have to do some.
I can follow up with the Board of Health. Um, they were given the application, but we haven't received a comment yet, and they don't need to have approved it from their end in order for us for this board to approve it, but we should have comments from them.
Okay.
So I will follow up too, just so that we can incorporate any comments or who starts to think of that, and then I imagine there will be a separate application process for that separately.
Yeah, basically, all I was to try and say, don't, you know, before we get too far down the road, make sure that you can continue down this road, you know, so. But I think you've heard some positive comments from us, I mean, that, that it will, it will energize that location some, and I think that, like Dave said, I agree. We could use a little energizing in that, in the, uh, Main Street.
Yeah, right there. You know, one thing, my, my office is across the street from you guys, and I have, um, employees that love to golf. I listen to it every Monday morning. And, uh, and when I come back with this one tomorrow, I'll get you knocked out, boy, they'll be excited about this, they will be. So good for you guys.
They'll, they'll work a little harder, a little faster, so they can get it over there, get some swings in.
Why are the trucks all packed up?
Sure. Well, we need some funding. I'm, I mean. Yeah, good luck with that, though.
Thanks.
I hope it works for you.
Thanks, guys.
Do you want to continue the hearing until?
Right.
Sorry?
Do you want to continue the hearing until our next meeting, and then we have a, a conditional for already?
Yeah, cuz, um, um, there's, um, there's some, some question I don't, I don't know about the, uh, giving up all of that, uh, retail space for, uh, for this. I, I suppose it's somewhat of a retail endeavor. But, um, I guess we'd have to decide, you know, is the board comfortable with giving that retail space up? That's the, that's the question.
I guess the, the new member of the economic, uh, council would say, what do you guys got cooking to move in there?
Yeah, I, it's nothing cooking. Um, not, no, um, there's been no talk at all of that building, um, at all. Um, and I think it was built in twenty twenty. The, the one next to it was built, you know, later, like, the smaller one, it's filled up now.
Yeah, that's a much smaller building, it's a much larger facility.
Well, it, it is and it isn't. I mean, it is, but the, the downstairs, you know, the, the first level is the, is kind of the mixed-use part, the rest of it's story, so, yeah, I mean, it's if you just take that space against it, they're, they're similar.
Yeah, the spot is the place where E P S stores now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's, that was, you know, that took time and that, like, the, the last time the applicant from thirty-five was here, those were all empty, you know, and so he, rightly so, he's pointing out, like, I've got, is it four or five base?
I think it's five.
Well, because one, the single one is the owner. So it's, yeah, so, thank you, but I mean, you, you're looking at that, that's just, it was eleven or so, or ten spaces all, all there, but they've since filled that one up, and this is good news possibly here, so, yeah.
Hmm.
But, yeah, it's encouraging, so.
And so, uh.
So I like the, it's not something, it's something we already have. Yeah, like another animal store, or, yeah, how many liquor stores we have?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to give them a sense of what we feel as far as how they're, they're going forward, so. John, you have a comment? Uh, well, I haven't opened up the public yet, so hang on. Um, um, okay, well, I'm gonna open it up for public, uh, questions and comment. Uh, please direct all questions through the chairs, take a name and address. Prior to asking the question, anybody from the public have a question? Ah, yes.
Name John Hanks, four D one, drive, North Reading. So one point of reference, next to the U P S store is still a vacancy. Okay.
Yeah.
And that building was built two years before they ever occupied. And, and as you know, that place since that happened, you've been two years, because they couldn't get the gas line across the street. You know, that part of in twenty-eight is, needs some energy. Um, and as you know, the storage facility, quiet to, it's existing status used to be a bowling alley, bowling alley, stayed for many years, and that's a community, social venue, which this will end up being.
That's a good point.
Points, points of difference.
Didn't think the bowling alley had a liquor license?
Yes, it did.
That's a good selling point, guys.
Wink, wink.
He's just taking it back.
Bill Canal, four seven nine, Fox Street, okay? This might be more of a suggestion than commenting to the board, uh, but maybe having a third game plan of not having any alcohol involved and just doing golf simulators to be able to maybe make it a an option there on Main Street, in case the liquor license doesn't come through. I mean, it does sound like a really good idea for the community, so if they hate to see something like that fall through, um, not being able to get a liquor license, not having the septic to be able to back up a bar or a restaurant with food option, just that, you know, just having the simulators if everything else falls through.
My sense is, saying, my, my sense is that it's sort of like a cruise ship, that alcohol is a profit line. A lot of it, yeah. That's where.
Goes hand in, hand in hand with golf.
Yeah. But this, uh, unit like this is not cheap, it's, it's gonna require a number of years to pad off. And a lot of people come again. But the margin is usually increasing, like, with the, uh, alcohol licenses, so that's really, that's really the thing they, that they, uh, so that's why I say, uh, you I know, I understand clearly that it's an important part of your time, so that's why I'm encouraging you to get an answer, but it's just, hopefully, as you, as you go forward, but it could change the way you look at the whole, I mean, so.
I understand.
Um, okay, so we'd like to, so there's a few things, like, I noticed it when I read your thing, you were looking at certain number of seats, and you want to get more parking spots, increase the number of seats.
Well, that, that went hand in hand with the bar, um, so we requested from the landlord for three more seats, so we do go with the bar, now we have twelve seats for the bar. Um, you know, that's, that's why we requested for additional spots, which we got, so I, I guess that's a, a good thing.
Right.
Um, like you said, we'll, we'll check in with the board of health and and make sure all those, um, avenues try and check it off, but.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so you say you won't give us an actual plan, um, of what you're gonna do in there until you get all your answers, so.
I mean, I don't think they need a board of health on, prior to.
So I was looking more about how many seats they're gonna have in there, with the layout inside building, so.
Yeah, we, we do have two floor, the two floor plans that I, I, um.
They're, they're included in the, uh, yeah, in there.
Um, so, and if we get the at the worst, the best case scenario, we do the bar, we have significant parking, and then if we don't do the bar, we, we still have enough parking.
Yeah.
The bar would require additional parking.
Which we're.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, then, yeah, what, do we have something else we need from them, or?
Uh, we really don't. I think it would be helpful to have comments from the Board of Health just advising them. I think the Board of Health will have them, um, to an application, um, but other than that, no, I mean, I'd be happy to draft, um, the decision to press your review with the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, but they seem to have secured all the parking that the zoning would require for the number of seats they want to have, if the bar does work out. If they don't get a liquor license, that doesn't necessarily change anything about site plan review.
We are gonna have to, we are gonna have to, it's gonna have to show the parking.
Yeah.
And however much parking you're gonna use, so, I mean, those are things that you, uh, you can start someplace, and you can work your way through the rest of that, so. So, um, so you wanna do that. And they give us plan, but now you say you're gonna give the, the owner of the property and give you a couple more parking spots?
Three, three additional spots.
Three additional.
Yep.
So is it just the same site plan that exists now, and it's just a Simon of spots?
I see, the, uh, the parking, the site parking plan, um, currently, then, prior to was eighteen, so with the three ones, it's gonna be twenty-one.
Um, and I, I also described the breakout, I'm being provided, so the, the, the standard for parking for the rest of the building is, or for the rest of the units, is one space per three hundred square feet.
Right.
But for seating for a bar, the kitchen bar area, it's, um, different, it's, um, one space for four seats, which is why that, that equation, you know, they, they wanted to have, they would, originally with the plan that they submitted that you have in file there, they, um, only had, um, a couple of, I think it was eight seats at the bar. They, um, only had, um, a couple of, I think it was eight seats at the bar. I don't remember how many you originally had, but with the addition of each space, you can get an additional four seats at the bar. Just, just purely by the zoning calculation. So if they have that number. And they had submitted a letter from the owner allowing them to use an additional three spaces on the site. So, um, it would seem that they would have enough space, uh, parking spaces allowed by the zoning for the maximum number of bar seats that they want to have if they're successful.
So we, and they still have enough, so the storage units still have enough parking for their use.
Um.
Well, that's nice, that's where.
Yeah, okay, we should probably check to be sure that the.
We answer that.
Storage, oh, you can try. I, I do need to check the zoning.
Yeah, if, if, if you look.
Please say your name.
John Hangsu.
I know who you are, but you know who doesn't know? The recorder doesn't know.
Oh, yeah.
It's all, this is all for the recording, so that we have an accurate recording, who said what.
Yeah.
Please, what?
So, John Hangsu, forty one, I'm correct. Um, if you look at their. Site plan, uh, that originally was done for the building. There's. Designated spots for all retail. And additional for all the storage. Plus there's also storage, parking spaces inside the building.
Yes.
Historically. All the exterior spaces for the storage are not used because they're using. The interior for transient and they use maybe one or two outside plus one, put a two for employee. So.
Yeah.
It is.
Well, I understand that, but also, but there's, but there's a, uh.
I, I.
There's a calculation that needs to be done, and we have to make sure that we allow, um, that, that we've allowed enough parking spots for the use. For the base use of the property. On top of what they're, I mean, the, the, it's nice that the owner gives them a couple more spots. But it occurred to me, you're saying those spots from somebody else and is he, is he then shorting his, his business?
Well, you, you, you have a retail spot, spots. Um, not utilizing the capacity also.
Yeah, that, that they could.
I think it's an allocation of total retail space, which was one calculation and then another allocation of total self-storage space. So because this is the only retail, not retail, but the only use of these storefronts being used. I think that any three spaces that are taken away would be taken away from the other spaces, but if that's how the owner chooses to allocate, I think as long as there is the correct number. That the zoning calls for, but I will check with the building inspector because he would be the final call on the zoning for that.
And there's three, thirty six spots designated for retail. Out of those, there's unit three to, out of two, let's say. There's one, one, one wholesale using, um, unit three in Africa two. And. It, although they're. Allegated. Nine spaces. They generally never use more than one or two spaces because it's a, it's a wholesale, it's the person who beats there and. And so the landlord can control how many spaces he designates for that person, for that retail space.
I will follow up with the building inspector to be sure he's comfortable with the allocation of space.
Right, yeah, I think that's.
A, and plus, it's a forty.
When you told me that he was giving you a couple of spaces, I'm like, where's he getting them from? He's not creating them, so.
He, he, he's standing on the even, you can be on, out, allocating.
Well, you know, the, um, um. The problem we would come to say, if the other, all the other units suddenly find, um, as result, and, and, you know, one of the things that could happen is. Was what you're doing, somebody says, well, I saw golf clubs up and I'm gonna take one of your other stores, be right next door. So that could happen, and now you're, now you've got customers going there, and so now all of those parking spots that were originally allocated are necessary. Properly allow for the use, those other, other offices to be used. So, I just wanna make sure that we haven't robbed one to pay for the other, you know, that's, so when you said that, I. It occurred to me that it's not creating, if it was creating those parking spots by paving some area and making them, that would be one thing. But, um, um, I, I believe, I believe there was an excess of parking spots, I believe, when you did that.
I, I would just follow up and make sure that.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at that, but I just wanted to make sure, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. John Hangsu.
John Hangsu, what year is that? What's the minimum parking space?
Size?
Yes.
Ten by twenty, or, but, uh, but, uh, a lot of them are nine by eighteen, you can go up to nine, nine by eighteen, there's a, there's a compact car parking spot. Um, but, but the standard is ten by twenty, right?
I think you need a variance for nine by eighteen.
Variance from the Board of Appeals to do the nine by eighteen. And they pretty much, you know, most of the cars you see on the road these days are. Will fit those nine by eighteen is just fine. My pickup truck, on the other hand. To squeeze sometimes, but, uh, but you could, uh, if you needed to do that, that is an avenue, you could call, go to the Board of Appeals if they'll allow you to. To do maybe half of your spots or two thirds of your spots, there's nine by eighteens and as long as you park, have some. Not sure, probably, I know they've done that at different times, allocated certain numbers, so. That's the concept that might help you. With the parking thing. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna, we're going, you guys get to see where you can get down and you wanna do a conditional approval for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll draft that for the next meeting. Do you wanna just continue until our next?
Yeah, we'll continue until the next, to the next meeting, so.
All right, is there anybody online that wants to public comment? Not that I think there is, but I know. Just Nick.
There's gotta be some exciting, I can't believe I'm, I go by there early, early in the morning and the place is already mowed with people involved, it's up here. It's an addiction, I think, that's why.
A little bit.
Good.
I think this is a cool idea.
Thanks.
Great, so the next meeting would be, um, August nineteenth. You wanna, uh, there is a motion to continue.
That answers the question I was gonna make, cuz the, the motion reads the eighteenth, so I just wanted to double check. Before I, before I read it officially, uh, I will, I will, uh.
Dave, I might.
Say it appropriately.
Danielle, I, I, I would not probably be able to be here on the nineteenth.
Okay, what would you like to do? Do you want to continue further to another meeting or do you wanna go ahead? We just need to make sure that there are four members, oh.
Yeah.
We actually need four members for.
Okay, yeah, I can't, uh, can't.
Okay.
Or we can't do it?
September second would be the next meeting after that.
Is what?
September second is our next meeting.
All right, all right. Yeah, okay.
Continue to September second, then, does that look very?
Yeah, we'll begin with.
That, you, you might need that time anyway to get to some of your other issues.
Yeah.
So, uh. So, yeah. But I think, you see, we're enthusiastic about this, so. If you need information, don't be afraid to call in, Danielle's great, you know, you'll actually help me.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, uh, continue to September second at seven thirty P M.
That sounds good. Go ahead with that. I moved C P C vote to continue the public hearing to thirty five Main Street to September second, twenty twenty five, at seven thirty P M.
Second. In the second, no further discussion, but wait a minute, first of all, no, yeah, it's good, we're gonna continue. Okay, uh. Any further questions behind? You're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, that's a record, so it's four favors or opposed.
Thank you.
Don't get it, I think it's a cool idea.
Sure.
The, um. Administrative updates during this?
Yes, oh, you're welcome, thank you, um.
Thank you, Greg.
I sent it out by email. I don't know if you want me to go over the email if you had a chance to read it, but there was a math error in the compliance model, um, too, actually. And, um, so it's been corrected and resubmitted, but it, like, I can just kind of give you an overview of what that was. So, um, the compliance model is basically the, the math expression of what we put in the zoning. So what we put in the zoning does not change, but the way the state asks us to prove that it complies is by doing an analysis, it starts with G I S. We take the parcels or the G I S administrator takes the parcels and excludes all of the land that doesn't, you know, count wetlands, flood zone, et cetera. And then we come up with the numbers of acreage for what should be included as developable. And when that was done, or it wasn't even the previous G I S administrators, two G I S administrators ago, um, didn't understand that there was an additional step. So he gave me the number that was excluded land and that ended up in the space for included land, which is a much smaller, you know, the included land is a much bigger number than the excluded land. So we didn't know that that had been reversed and it didn't come up in the test review, um, so that has been fixed. But the other thing that happened, and that was why the state had contacted us to ask, are you sure that that's the number? Because it looks like it's been reversed, the included and the excluded. So initially I said, no, no, that's the number I was given, that's definitely right, but when I went back and really like went through what the G I S person had done, it's like, it was clear that, yes, it had been reversed. Um, and then the other thing we discovered was, I don't know if you remember, but last year. There was a, um, we did our test review. The state had said, because North Reading requires a special permit for all flood zone construction. Um, you have to exclude all your flood zone lands, so that resulted in another ten acres being excluded. Um, so that went into our excluded land number, but nobody told us to take it out of our included land number, so that distorted it. So both of those things have been corrected. We did the compliance model, oh, with only those numbers really changing, the results of compliance don't change. Um, the density figures do change, and this was, um, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, the density figures change?
Yes.
And if, I. Was this on the agenda, cuz?
Oh, no, just, I was just gonna do it as an update, we don't have to talk about it tonight.
Oh, okay, cuz I'm just, I have no idea, but we're gonna talk about this.
No, I just, all their old business, I was just asked by the state to submit it, Dave had actually asked me a question about it, so I just wanted to make sure.
In fairness for Danielle too, but me, since it came up and then I just saw, I'm like, oh, what, what, what would have to change? And I thought, cuz I was on vacation, so I thought maybe she had addressed it, and I just missed the email, and then she replied, and then I saw that today, so. I assume she would bring it up in the, in the updates, you know, if we need that more formal, but I mean, I, I, I think you're good personally, like, uh. You sent it out today and it's more just an update of what it is, but, um. Um, so anyone else wants to?
Okay.
The math, it just, your explanation made sense, but I think what you were getting to, Jeff, is the important part, like, is the density stuff. I mean, I understand the math explanation will make sense on a, on, you know, move around.
So my question too would be, um, again, I'm totally underpaid for this, I, I didn't see it. Whatever. And, um, my question is. If we're making a change. To something that was wooed. Like.
We're not, so none of the zoning changes, so the state will run their own analysis, totally independent of anything that we do or submit, they're gonna run it themselves. They're gonna come to their own conclusion, which should match the numbers that we got too. But if, so, basically, we have told them, this is the total acreage. But they have the G I S, they have the exact same G I S data and they're gonna see themselves, they're gonna check to be sure that our acreage is what we say it is. That's kind of how their review works. It's, it, it doesn't change anything that was written into the zoning or was approved by town meeting. Um, all it changes is when they ask us to input, what are all the number, what are all of your, how big are your properties? If we've made a mistake in telling them how big our properties, then me correcting that doesn't change how big the properties actually are.
So in, in the warrant article that was approved through town meeting, what was the number there? And what's the real number?
There's no density that, there's no density number approved in the warrant article, cuz that's not part of the warrant article. So, the warrant article only says, you know, there are X number of units that are permitted on this property, that doesn't change. It says, these are the two sites that it's going to be, that doesn't change. It says, this is the height, the height doesn't change.
Oh, sorry about the land and the footprint.
Right, the footprint can't change because the property is what it is, so it's, they, we miscalculated. What was left over after flood zone and wetlands was excluded. We just, we gave them the wrong number, but that, that, those numbers are not actually in the warrant article. All that's in the warrant article is one hundred and one of four over. The compliance model is totally separate from what gets through the town meetings, so. When you ask, like, the density figure went from forty one units to the acre, which is pretty high, and yet probably someone should have been like, whoa. Now it's sixteen point five, which is a much more realistic number for a site like that. That, those numbers are not in the zoning. Those are just the explanation numbers to the state, but yes, we met your target of having to do fifteen units to the acre or, or better. It went from forty one to sixteen, but that's not relevant to what went in the zoning or what was approved. This doesn't change anything that was approved at town meeting. This is just our explanation of what our properties contain and where they are, and that's, that, and what the zoning says to build on it, that's, none of that. That make sense?
Yeah, no, I get it, I just, you know, to see a change, and I get it, there's no change.
Right, right, like, I can't change the zoning.
Right, I understand that, and, and, and I get it, if it was, it's an address, so it's an address. Whether we gave the right numbers or not, it's irrelevant, cuz the address was given.
Our inflated number that was incorrect. Was the real number, the real number's still bigger than.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I just wanna make sure that there, what was at town meeting, what was approved. Isn't changing for what we're doing, because we don't have the authority.
We absolutely don't, and the state wouldn't allow us to do that anyway, like, we, they, we couldn't submit something different in our zoning from what town meeting passed, like, they're, they would never allow us.
Yeah, no, just, just, yeah, just, they'll check and make sure that we're not amending, we're not doing anything other than required by the law.
Nothing at all, nothing at all.
Yeah, so, how do we end up, I'm just curious, how do we end up with that? And I'm like, so high.
So, what happened was, total acreage is seventy nine.
Right.
There's a figure that you get, so the G I S person goes in and they cut out, they make a, like a cut out of the. Flood zone area and the wetland area and some other excluded requirements. And they get another number, well, that number had been nineteen point five, it was supposed to have taken nineteen point five and subtracted that of the total seventy nine acres to get. Usable number, fifty six point something. He didn't do the subtraction, he just sent me nineteen point five and said, that's your density denominator. It wasn't, it was actually a number in a field called density nom deduct. It was supposed to have been the deduction, not the actual density denominator, he missed the step of subtraction. So that's how that happened. Now, would it have made sense for someone to have been like, wow, nineteen point five is a really, really tiny amount of usable area, are we sure? I didn't catch that, the state didn't catch it when they did their test review, only now, we submitted our full compliance model, did they say, hey, are you sure about that? Cuz that's a really, really small number, it looks like we failed to practice, oh, well, we did, oh, and also, by the way. When we were asked to change our flood zone numbers last year. We were only asked to add it to the deduction and not to subtract it from the inclusion, so that, that's just been corrected, but none of, but like I said, none of that is in the zoning. It's just, it's just how the G I S person cut out the, the parcel acreage and then just didn't, that's, that was it.
Wow, state's actually doing their job, man. What the heck is going on?
That's impressive.
They actually caught something.
It would have been nice if they caught it last year.
What else could be slide through?
Okay, it would have been good, cuz then we would have just not had to revisit it, but, um, it's, it's fine, I mean. We're still waiting for them to finish their review, we may be waiting for quite a while, um, they have to finish their review, the attorney general's office has to finish their review too, so.
Did they, uh, suspend the date again for compliance? Did they push it out another six months?
I heard a rumor that they did, I couldn't find it anywhere.
Really? If they did, I'm just curious.
Could be hopeful, some, some, some people's part.
There was some time.
But you're right, you're right, to, to find, but then, they actually have a bean counter that knows how to do his job, that found this.
Yeah, I know one thing, man, how to give my tax dollars away, that I know.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Yeah. Well, I, I, but I also heard that, that there was, there's gotta be some extra chapter ninety money this year.
I'm sorry?
Chapter ninety money, there's gonna be some extra for roads and.
There are already those grants, I think, already.
I, I. Yeah, I don't know.
That was in the transcript this week, there was two separate ninety grants, the two, for the two, two bridges.
Yeah.
They can't be federal, so they're state, you know, yeah. And they got, uh, but they go by mileage, I guess, you know, but we got our allotment, if you will, it was by mileage.
Miles we had of, of.
You know, Redding got a bunch, and, yeah.
That's why Dave Handler wanted to pave everything he could pave, anything he could get hot dog on, too, we wanted to get hot dog on, because it would.
Now I get it. Now forget it.
Yeah, well, I, we talked many times about it. About how to, uh, how to increase some, uh, chapter ninety money by paving more, getting more roads up and paid. And, and we actually got.
Since I live on a dirt road, I'm gonna say they fell short.
Well, Mike, our, our, was our attorney been here for a while, he got a couple of neighborhoods to put, pulling money off, and to get the matching fund and pay some roads, so, you know, we, we made everybody.
It's good.
Yeah, yeah.
It's good to see they're finally working on the bridges there.
You know, I, you know, I kind of thought that.
The park one looks like maybe. Because wasn't it supposed to be done?
It was supposed to be serviceable in July.
That's just me. Need a bigger machine.
Yeah, it was supposed to be drivable in July, and all the punch list items done by October, now they're saying it'll be done by October, you get it when you get it, basically.
The large stream?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's crazy. It's like a little stream where it kills, you know, bunch of cars into that.
What, that bridge?
I'll be in both of them early.
Yeah, I mean, I'm telling you, it was done in two weeks, just get a big piece of bike, take the whole lot drop to bike and bury it.
Thank you, Warren, I know what you do. That's the option the select board passed up on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
They said no to that one, that was only two point one million.
Yeah, yeah.
They want to spend three point four. Warren's, Warren moved out of his house uncoldly, please, the top of the hill there.
All right, I think, uh, I think we're all set for tonight.
I do want to just talk about schedule though, because if you'll be on August nineteenth, um, we don't have Thirty-Five Main Street coming back till September second, and we don't have Amber Road coming back until September second. Do you want to meet on the nineteenth or not? You will want, just want to push it to.
Since Warren's not gonna be here.
There's nothing going on.
And if there's nothing going on, and we've just, I mean, yeah, we're just barely, Warren, so I mean, not barely, we are, but, right, yeah, I mean, I'm fine. August.
So, my wife's birthday.
Oh, we're coming, man.
We have all kinds, I've made all kinds of plans for her, so.
Nice with us. Will be fireworks spring, the whole C B C up there.
If I don't show up, who will?
I'll show up in a, in a, in a, in a. Crash Warren's party. That decor.
There you go, right?
Yeah, what do you think?
September second is.
Yeah, I mean, so.
That makes sense.
It's August, take it off.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
One, that's probably the last one, yeah, for a while. Back to work, September.
All right.
Okay. Good?
Um, and.
Nothing else, all the new.
Unless anyone else has anything? Oh, I did hear that the Z B A, um, the twenty on street application is not gonna be in front of the B B A on Thursday.
I heard that too.
Yeah, they asked to continue it.
Continue, yeah.
So.
They're still right now holding the, the high school room as the place, but they don't have a date yet, right?
Right, so I think when they, they are gonna meet anyway, because they have a meeting on their next meeting, but, um, I think they'll find a date at that time.
Yeah.
But I'll let you know some of the time here. Um, so I will let the select board know.
Next, any questions? Oh, no, that's. Oh.
Oh, E D C appointments, so, uh, yeah, those joint appointments have to get scheduled, but the select board, I, I'm just kind of waiting to hear when they might want it on their agenda, that, and as soon as I find that out, I can leave, I'm assuming it's usually at one of their meetings, so I can let everyone know when they are looking to maybe do that, um.
What if they'll do the E D C appointments and the C B C appointments, if we could smash it all together?
Would be great, I mean.
But once we notify the select board, they can put out their, our.
Yeah, for the C B C member, and then usually that process is, you know, depending on how many I, we may schedule an interview, that might be a longer process than the E D C appointments, cause I know there have been a number of people who have already applied. For E D C, so I don't know, they may want to do them on separate nights, but, um, I don't know if there were any dates that you wanted me to ask, would, if that, they would work, or if you want me to just, you know, find out from, you know, like, or what their agenda might be, upcoming dates, and I'll let you know, and then you'll.
Or, just, I mean, let, what, what night they can, uh, one night we can have a joint meeting?
Yeah, I mean, usually the E D C appointments are usually done at their meeting.
Right.
So.
So, um, but we, but, um, yeah, okay, you can check for that, see when they can do it, because we, we can do the E D C anytime, and
Yeah.
and then, and then, uh, then, uh, we've got to get some applicants and do some interviews, so.
Yeah.
It'll take a little time.
So you have two, two positions to fill, the E D C?
Yes, you have two numbers, there are other associate positions that if there are more people who have applied that are interested in, um, potentially could be made associate members, because there's not really a lot on that. So, um, I guess I'll look out for, usually get a bunch of citizen activity forms, um, from the T A's office, and I can send those out, that way. Usually the liaisons tend to reach out to some of the candidates, I, I'm not involved in that process, but I think that's what often happens, um, to talk to them and, you know, maybe give them, before making your recommendation. But, as soon as I get some citizens activities, uh, activity form, I can.
Yeah, I'd like to build those, like, the C B C building.
It's hard to get a form.
I'm actually here as an interestee member of the C B C. And I spoke to Warren, this, uh, before the meeting tonight, I spoke to John at the town barbecue, we emailed a few times.
Great.
So, it's good. Chat, but afterwards, if anybody had any.
You're doing everything, showing up for the meetings, I've.
Yeah, I've already put it in my calendar to be at the meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's how long. I'm on the nineteenth, cause I can't be here with the height, so. If you have any suggestions or anything, I mean, all this process works, I'm.
Um, I, I think as soon as we, we'll put something out, usually something in the transcript and online, just inviting, uh, applications, usually just a resume and a cover letter explaining, um, your interests. And, um, it's always a great idea too, if you have some time, to go back and watch, all the meetings are on Zoom, so, if you, or on the Northam channel.
Yeah, I went on the website the other day, we could do, I'm really eating all some bad food.
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, I see how the files.
The Northam has a, um, YouTube channel, and it's got all of these on there.
And if you have questions about function or if I need to.
Off our back would you go for anything relative now?
You want to watch fun stuff?
Now the N B T A's off the dock.
You're, you're coming in at a good time, where it's getting back to its normal snail pace. That was a crazy year.
I, I went back and watched a year during the election cycle, and then that was all the N B T A stuff, and then.
Right.
Three, eight hours, four hours.
As Jonathan knows, can be watched, it, it like, you're not, you're not, whatever you watch from a year, it's not gonna be life. So it might not be helpful to you. It's gonna be more like, you know, what you saw today, and me and our plans, and, you know, like, it's just a slower pace than that crazy, you know? This poor woman worked clean triple time during that period, all this stuff going on. But, uh, yeah, that's for a moment at least. Rather do site planning dudes, all right? You know, just, like, that's great, right?
Yeah.
You know, love that, it's coming in. Did you, I mean, I know, uh, we, we, we haven't ended the meeting yet, right? But what I was expecting with thirty-five, when I first saw it, was like, oh no, they're asking for, you know, to go full storage again. Cause I just quickly looked at it, and I just said, oh, thirty-five, they're back, you know? Cause they, they would come every two years, or whatever, and say, can we go all storage? You know, and I'm like, oh, now we gotta tell them, and I'm like, I'm gonna have to be the bad guy. And it was a totally different thing.
He's been great, he's been coming in like every few days to make sure he's doing everything right for his allocation and everything, and.
I'm gonna definitely swing by the one in August, I want to check it out, you know, but, uh, love it, anything that kind of just adds some energy to twenty-eight, great.
I agree.
You know, especially, like I said, the uniqueness, it's.
You know, yeah.
It's not, you know, it's not a vape shop, you know?
Yeah, for the record. That whole, uh, smart growth thing with, with, uh, with residential window, it just hasn't, it hasn't panned out.
Yeah.
It hasn't, it was, it was a hot idea, and everybody was buying into it, but in practice, not been real successful.
Well, we'll see.
Cause this, this, but this is fine, this, this gives it a good commercial use, it's as close to commercial use as we want to get, so, I think so, uh, I think it's, I think it's.
Right, yeah.
I think it's gonna drag people in, and it's also you, when they I don't know, you know, if we encourage them, you know, to, uh, to work on this, but, uh, I can, we can probably end the meeting.
So you want to adjourn?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, let's adjourn, um, and we're meeting until September second.